Got your mic, okay, very good.
Yep.
All right, very good. Good morning. Call the meeting to order. If you please rise for the invocation. Supervisor Bishop and Pledgeable Agent Supervisor Angus.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather today. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help. We ask your guidance throughout this meeting that all of our thoughts and actions would reflect your will. Amen.
Amen.
Pardon me, in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors may, by motion, recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney on any item contained in the agenda pursuant to the Arizona Revised Statutes. At this time, I'll call for a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held October 1st, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03, portions A, 3, 4, and 7, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
Some moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried. Now on to official business. Mr. Esplin, discussion of pending legal or contemplated litigation.
Nothing to report to the Board, thank you.
Thank you. Committee or legislative reports. We'll start this morning with Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Wakamoto.
Yes, I've been attending the DCP meetings in Phoenix probably twice a week for I don't know how long.
Supervisor Wakamoto, can you speak louder, please?
Okay, the DCP meetings in Phoenix, can you hear me now? Are you able to hear this?
No.
Yeah, still difficult, very difficult for us to hear you.
Okay, let me see. Is this better?
That's better, thank you.
Is this, okay. The agme mitigation, I mean, the DCP committees have four major things they're trying to take care of before the end of the year. One is agme mitigation for Canal County, tribal ICS is the second one. Both of those have worked into small group sessions and are being handled at the same time and are on the verge of finding some kind of agreement. The other two is Arizona Conservation Plan and excess water and will continue to work on these things until the end of November so that they can possibly drop something in the legislature by January 1st.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Wakamoto. Anything further?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Bishop?
The only thing I have to report is I've been attending some of the travel management plan meetings. That's all that I've been active in this last two weeks.
Okay, Supervisor Angus.
Same here. Met with the BLM about the travel management plan and looking forward to this discussion today.
Very good. And I also have been in discussion with them, so we're all here to talk about this morning. Item number three, county manager's report. Mr. Hendricks.
I have no report to do, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Item number four, approve the September 6th, 2018 board minutes, special minutes, meeting minute.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on our agenda is the call to the public. Those wishing to address the Board at the call to the public regarding matters not on the Board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak for them. They are located in the back of the room and should be done prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to, of course, responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda with the exception of the consent agenda and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this Board. I have three people signed up for the call to the public this morning. Wayne Hollins. Good morning, Wayne.
Good morning, Dick. Chairman, Supervisors, been a while since I've been here, so I live 4825 North Mormon Flat, Golden Valley, and I'd like just to update you a little bit and then I have a couple comments or questions or what have you. So far, since we started collecting illegal dump sites and cleaning them up, we've hit 299,820 pounds, just so close to 300,000 pounds, 31 boats, and 11,140 tires. Last year, we did over 105,000 pounds. This year, we were probably exceed that, we're probably at 86,000 pounds now, so it's going good. We've also been able to purchase a dump trailer through the generous donations of money and scrap metal to round up the money to buy this, and surprisingly, we have a lot of donations from people in California and Nevada that made donations specifically for that purpose. So that was quite unexpected. Last year, in 2017, we had a meeting discussing the illegal dumping problem, and so far, we have not had a follow-up meeting to see if the actions that we have taken have been effective and that we need to do more or whatever. So I'd really like to see another meeting so we can discuss that. And another thing is, this year, we've had more people get fired and arrested for illegal dumping, but, and we hear about that in Facebook and the papers and stuff like that, but we haven't still yet hearing from what happened to the case in court, which I think is just as important or more important, so people don't think, oh, they just went to court and got a flap on the hand. So if we could get that also publicized, that would, I think that would be a great determinant to dumping in the desert. So that's what I'd like to see, but, you know, whatever we can do, and I appreciate all your support for our efforts out there, and I just want to thank you, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Hollins.
Mr. Chairman and Board members, I'm Royanne Ortiz. I live in Bullhead City, Arizona, and I'm here to continue talking about an important issue to me as a taxpayer. So I'm standing before you as just a taxpayer, and one of the things that I was concerned about was the most well-paid position, elected position in the county produced only one candidate that was minimally qualified. Fortunately for me as a taxpayer and for those of us living in the county, there will be another candidate that will come forward and run as a write-in, someone who is highly qualified and not just minimally qualified. So I wanted to be sure that people who got ballots know that write-ins are going to be necessary to write the name on the ballot and how important it is to get to know who you are voting for, what they stand for, their level of expertise, and so I wanted to encourage everyone in this room and everyone watching and hopefully to get it widely known who the candidates are for this important position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz.
Good morning, Michael Boone, 2210 Palaverty, North Lake Havasu City. On or about August 20th, 2018, this Board of Supervisors held an executive session regarding investigation into employee complaints of workplace harassment, special considerations, conflict of interest being given to certain developers and relatives of one Board member against Mojave County Development and Building Department operations employees. On 8/27/2018, in a public records request, I requested a copy of that investigation report that was spearheaded by Mike Hendricks and HR Director Ken Cunningham due to the complaints regarding fraud, corruption, cover-up with Supervisor Wakamoto's son-in-law Trent Pike's permits, and other violations at the house she resides in. Also, the preferential treatment being given by Michael Hendricks, Tim Walsh, Christine Ballard, and the Developmental Services to those that are related to Supervisor Wakamoto, and Planning and Zoning Commissioner Mahendi Artzimmy, who was Wakamoto's campaign chairperson. Mr. Esplin explained to me that the report was going to be held as attorney-client privilege. He said the other supporting documents are also attorney-client privileged, but I forwarded all my requests over to another agency for review and recommendation. I wanted to ask the Board if they instructed Mr. Hendricks and Ken Cunningham to initiate this investigation. If not, then how is the report associated with attorney-client privilege? It seems to me the county is insulating Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Ballard, Ms. Pike, and Ms. Wassermoto, along with Mr. Artzimmy. If there is no Board action, conduct the investigation, then I believe it's time for the county to release it to the public. Arizona Revised Statute is very specific on what is considered executive session material and what can be withheld from a public records request. Mr. Esplin, on 9/11/18 letter to me, said that it would not be disclosed because it outweighs the public interest in favor of disclosure to protect the state and the county. How does acknowledgement of a surreptician's investigation and withholding information that could bring criminal charges, substantial lawsuits, and has also triggered investigation by the EEOC into the county's employment practice be the best answer of anyone other than assertions that Mr. Esplin has made, which I understand? Why, if the allegations are so rampant that Mr. Hendricks and Human Resource Director Ken Cunningham would commission a private investigator versus contacting the State Attorney General's Office Criminal Unit or the United States Department of Justice investigators or the Federal Bureau of Investigation to conduct this investigation? It's my understanding, none of those agencies were contacted. Finally, when I submit a public request, I don't understand why members of the Mojave County government would telephone the person that I asked for the public records request and that person called me and accused me and Buster Johnson of putting some kind of conspiracy investigation into him. You know, there's no sacred cows to me, and I'm kind of getting tired of every time I put something in, this Board thinks Buster Johnson is involved with me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. That's all the people that I have signed up for call to the public. I will extend one more offer. Anyone else wishing to speak to call to the public, I will make one last. Okay, that's the end of call to the public, except for retort. Mr. Hendrick.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make clear for the public that the Board didn't commission that study, I didn't commission that study, Ken Cunningham didn't commission that study. That study was done for liability purposes by ASAP, our county insurance pool, which is separate from Mojave County, and to address Development Services. A little over a month ago, I felt it necessary to send a letter to Development Services, and this letter was a clarification and confirmation on performance expectations and focused on providing superior customer service while still ensuring code compliance. The reason I sent this letter was certain Board members had made it clear to me that excellence in customer service should be among our top priorities and objectives in permitting and inspection departments, and they were concerned we were no longer partnering with our development communities, and I wholeheartedly agreed. My letter focused on Fox String, an environment that treats the development community as partners, on ensuring tasks are performed in a timely manner, on ensuring effective communication with our customers, and on ensuring fair and even-handed treatment of our customers, and this letter was roughly three pages long. What I hoped, and I do hope still that we strive for every time that we have contact with a member of the public, is to try our best to listen and provide them with answers or solutions to their issues and help them to solve their problems so that they can have the best experience as possible in dealing with Mojave County that we can possibly provide. I understand because of narrow-focused views and hidden agendas, some people view our efforts at excellence in customer service and working with our development community as preferential treatment. I can say it's been my hope and is my desire that everyone who picks up the phone or walks up to a counter to do business with Mojave County feels that they were preferentially treated, and just in closing, I would say it's interesting to note that Mojave County Derangement Syndrome is alive and well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Onto with our agenda. We're pleased this morning to have Representative from Congressman Gosar's office, Penny Pugh. Penny's here to make a presentation to Mojave County Sheriff Sergeant Kyler Cox. We'll give the floor to Penny Pugh. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor, Chairman, members of the Board, and public. I appreciate the opportunity to be here on behalf of Congressman Gosar. Each year Congressman Gosar recognizes throughout District 4 both municipal and sheriff deputies during law enforcement, so we reach out to each of the sheriffs and police chiefs and ask them to submit one of their officers so that we can recognize those. And Lieutenant Kristy Thompson, at our request, send the following, and I would like to read this, bear with me. I would like to recommend Sergeant Cox as Outstanding Officer of the Year. Sergeant Cox began his boating career with the Mojave County Sheriff's Office in 2015. He is a field training officer, general instructor, diver, and search and rescue coordinator for waterways. This year, he received a lifesaving award on February 26th for saving the life of an 18-month-old child who had been recovered from the water from a capsized boat and was not breathing when located. The child has since made a full recovery. Lake Havasu has seen too many preventable drownings if life jackets had been worn. During this last season, we had four drowning deaths, and Sergeant Cox recovered the bodies of two of the victims. Sergeant Cox has placed the emphasis this season on promoting life jacket awareness and partnering with game and fish to provide correct-sized life jackets, safety booklets, and working through life jacket exchanges and doing safety inspections on watercraft. Each and every day, the officers and volunteers are working, as well as attending community outreach events, including safety fairs and community events to promote water safety. Sergeant Cox has also brought back the public education and boating safety to the sheriff's office. He has attended several schools and done boating demonstrations and taught boating safety, including proper life jacket wearing. He has participated in 19 events like this where he has spoken to hundreds of children and their parents. To continue with these efforts, Sergeant Cox has worked tirelessly this year to train over 25 boating safety volunteers for the sheriff's office and has been instrumental in making the program what it is today. Because of staff shortages, the boating volunteers have partnered with our officers to supplement waterway patrol by assisting deputies working Friday through Sunday during the boating season. While on the water, BSOs make consensual contacts with boaters. They provide them with safety and education items to ensure that they have a safe outing on the waterway. They also answer any questions that boaters may have. BSOs will also assist with critical incidents by holding perimeters, controlling traffic, closing boat launch ramps if necessary, and provide perimeter control for dive operations and trainings and many other tasks and community events. Sergeant Cox has also participated in several boat shows which are held in Lake Havasu City, where he had a booth to reach out to the public at these events and teach them about the boating rules, laws, and regulations. In addition, Sergeant Cox has participated in all of the safety briefings for major events on Lake Havasu, including Desert Storm, USBA World Jet Ski Finals, Fireworks Over the Lake, Gary Hart Memorial, Havasu Triathlon, Mark Hahn Memorial, Boat Parade of Lights, and new events like the Roundup Cup, bringing about several boats and many who need to learn about safety awareness. Actively participating in these safety briefings has reduced incidents and brought awareness to the boating participants. Sergeant Cox has been creative in maintaining our boating fleet and public building by using inmate labor from the jail. The Mojave County Sheriff's fleet has been totally redone and have never looked better. Sergeant Cox represents our agency with the boats and all parades within Mojave County to support boating safety. In reading this, it was, there was no reason to not award and recognize Sergeant Cox, I'd like to bring up, and I asked the sheriff if he would say a few words about one of, Sheriff Schuster.
Thank you, Penny. Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the Board. What an honor. This is fantastic, and I want to thank, thank you, Penny, and of course Congressman Gosar. It's always a pleasure for us to recognize one of our own. This is not the first time this Board has seen this fine young man here receiving accommodation for something, and I'm very proud of him. I can say that he's a wonderful officer, but moreover, he's a genuine person. He's committed to Mojave County. He interacts tremendously well with all involved, and so when he's out there representing me, I'm comfortable. I know that he's doing the job properly and he's doing it with respect and courtesy. So as a department, we could not be prouder, and again, I want to thank Penny for coming down today, and let's go ahead, and I'd like to read off their certificate if you don't mind. Kyler, come on over. This is in law enforcement appreciation certificate, is hereby awarded to Sergeant Kyler Cox, Mojave County Sheriff's Office for outstanding service and lasting contribution to the community. We're very proud of you, Kyler, it's well-deserved, and congratulations.
Again, he's someone to be proud of and certainly a role model for those who are in the community, and I appreciate the opportunity to share our appreciation for law enforcement.
Thank you, Penny.
Now, if I could get 10 more like him, I wouldn't be in front of you every month asking for more deputies, I'll tell you that. Thank you.
Very good, and good luck. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, continuing on our agenda, we need to go, now go to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless the Board member so requests. That event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. These items would be items 5 through 32. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any items to remove?
Item 30, Mr. Chair.
Item 30?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Wakamoto?
None.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
I have none.
Supervisor Angus?
Supervisor Johnson took mine, item 30.
Very good, and I have none. Chair will entertain a motion for the consent agenda, items 5 through 32 with the exception of items 30.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And second, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto item number 30, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no problem with anything on the item. The only thing I would request is that the people who are left behind, that we start their pay raises at the time of this fiscal year. That'd be the only amendment to it, I would be interested in. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Angus?
Okay, back in March of this year, I gave my assistant, I believe, a well-deserved raise, and it was on the same kind of county manager report, and it was taken out and somewhat scrutinized, which is fine, expected, and at the time Supervisor Johnson asked that, the only reason he took it out was because he thought that there needed to be some kind of study done about all of the assistants, and we had a very kind of spirited debate, Chairman Watson, about how we go and look at each other's budgets, and each supervisor decides for themselves what they need in terms of help and assistance. Some of us have offices here, some of us have offices in other county buildings, and some of us rent buildings all to itself, and there's not one assistant that I know that doesn't deserve some kind of raise, but that's not really why I brought this out. To this day, and I brought it up back then, I've been here now six years, I think I pretty much understand the job of supervisor and what we do, and I don't understand why any supervisor would need two full-time assistants. So according to this report, in District 5, there will be two full-time employees both making what my assistant makes and what I'm seeing maybe the other supervisors are raising, which is 51,688. So I'm wondering if perhaps Supervisor Johnson would meet with me and maybe the other supervisors, because maybe there's something we don't know, maybe there's part of this job that we're not doing that would warrant another assistant, because we're all doing just fine, I think, with one. So I would hope that Supervisor Johnson maybe can tell us what happens in his office, I'm sorry, District 3, I'm sorry, District 3 Supervisor Johnson's in District 3, he has two full-time assistants. So I'd really like to know that, because I want to make sure I'm doing my job to the best of my ability.
Anything else?
Yeah, oh, okay, well, that's it. So maybe in the future Supervisor Johnson can talk to me and fill me in on maybe some things I'm leaving out that would warrant another full-time assistant. So that's it, thank you.
Maybe a one-on-one visit with Supervisor Johnson might...
I would love a one-on-one visit with Supervisor and maybe sit in his office and see what everybody does. I'd really like that, actually. Thank you.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion for item number 30.
I move we approve item 30.
We have a motion for the approval of item 30. I'll second the motion. Second by Supervisor Wakamoto.
Mr. Chairman?
And discussion, Supervisor Johnson.
Does that not include the going back to the fiscal year to give the left-behind people... the left-behind people their pay raises?
That would have to be modified by your motion.
No, I'm leaving my motion as is.
I don't believe so, Supervisor Johnson.
Chairman Watson?
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Bishop?
I just wanted to say that that's an interesting comment that Supervisor Johnson made, making this reactive to the January first, beginning of the year. I would not be opposed to that.
July.
Or the, I'm sorry, July.
Can I ask a question then? How does that work into the budget?
Chairman, I could call on the Finance Director, but we've had this conversation. It was the intent to start the left-behind raises when it was approved by the board, and that's what it was structured, and that's what has actually happened. It wasn't budgeted for to do the retroactive to July first. So that money isn't accounted in the budget.
Right, so if we were to do it as Supervisor Johnson wants, we would have to find extra money, because it's not budgeted.
That's correct.
Okay, so I, my motion remains the same.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
We approved this with the budget, correct? That we approved the raises.
Yes. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chairman, that the approval of that initiative was worded so that it would start when we did start it, but if we could ask Coral, Ms. Lloyd.
Good morning, Ms. Lloyd.
Good morning. In direct response to your question, we did budget for the full year of the allocation. However, at the tail end of this year, we also have to account for the accrual, so we always want to be careful, and mostly it was due to the implementation date, the effective date of the budget, so that we had an opportunity, basically, to have the two-week period to implement those increases. So going back and making them retroactive is an incredible amount of work, and therefore, at least the time period, the four budget years that I've been here, we've made them effective with the pay date following adoption of the final budget, as well as the other initiatives, and there were quite a few other initiatives that went in place.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd.
Okay.
Well done.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Chairman Watson, if I can just get clarification. So right now, we have on the table a motion to adopt item number thirty with no other modifications or amendments to it. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's my understanding.
And do we have a second?
We have a second from Supervisor Wakamoto. Any further discussion? Okay, with no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk for a full call book.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes, yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now onto our regular agenda. Item number thirty-three, discussion possible action, a review of any county rideaways as created by RS-2477 or other legal means across Bureau of Land Management public recreational trails considered under the draft of Bureau of Land Management Travel Management Plan for the entire Kingman Field Office management area. Mr. Lautowski has been in attendance to many of these meetings, and he may want to give us a short outline. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Watson and members of the board. Public Works at the direction of Board of Supervisors has been fulfilling staff duties and carrying out the requirements of the cooperative agency status that the county has been provided for and the board has previously consented to, and this relates to the participation in inter-agency coordination meetings, as well as information presentation on the draft travel management plan specific to BLM Kingman Field Office area. The draft travel management plan does set forth a study of five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven miles of public recreational use trails. As it stands presently, the draft plan does make a recommendation for the proposed closure of one thousand six hundred and twenty-two miles. That's twenty-nine percent of the total trails considered in the plan. At the board's request, and hence the item that's brought before today, Public Works through the Office of the County Surveyor completed a very robust analysis of those public-use trails presently laid out and represented in the plan, and laid them out against actually one-hundred-year-old-plus general land office maps that provide us for an opportunity to examine back in history whether any of those routes were previously laid out for public use, meaning public ingress and egress. And we did find through the staff's outstanding analysis and evaluation that one hundred and seventy-two miles of those trails may have been established. That's eleven percent of the total proposed closures, and where that stands is by ascertaining those mapped roads from previous historical records, the county may be in a position to assert an RS-2477 standing as those roadways that have a prescribed right-of-way for public use that were in fact laid out and used by virtue of their being mapped prior to nineteen seventy-six, when the RS-2477 statute was repealed. We have been actively communicating a standing position on behalf of the county, Public Works has, and this dates back to the February timeframe, against any closure of public recreational use trails to preserve their existing ingress and egress. There's a couple of points, as I wrap up, I'd like to bring up with regard to just our examination of the Travel and Transportation Management Manual, as well as the handbook that BLM, these are products issued, you know, by the BLM headquarters in DC, that relates to closure designations, and one that really stands out is, you know, closure designations, I can see a fatal flaw that could be applied to some, if it even applies, and you know, and that would be one congressionally-designated wilderness areas that should warrant consideration for what is referred to as statutorily closed to motorized and mechanized use. However, the other closure definition really relates to restricting OHV use being necessary to protect resources, promote visitor safety, or reduce user conflicts. So we invite, and really haven't seen very clearly, you know, those particular parameters applied to any closures. And lastly, I'd like to leave off by, you know, making a statement as it relates to the RS-247 status, that it is, you know, through BLM's handbooks, you know, preferable, and they just state preferable, to obliterate rehabilitate routes that are not identified in the travel plan or otherwise presented for closure. So by closing and possibly obliterating any of these routes, that would quite possibly extinguish any future assertions of RS-2477 rights over those routes. I present the Public Works report as requested by the board.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions for Mr. Lautowski? Thank you. We have a number of--
Actually, Chairman Watson, I do have one question. Mr. Lautowski, I'm aware that you met with BLM and shared this information with them about the RS-2477 roads, and do we need to make that a public comment or a cooperating agency comment so that it's officially in their records, or did that happen at our last meeting?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, very good question. Public Works is well positioned to remit any comments as an outcome of this meeting as part of our cooperative agency standing to remit such comments. We have a deadline of tomorrow, but we are very well positioned, and I fail to acknowledge Hal Barton, our Parks Administrator, who has been the point person for Public Works from Mojave County on communicating these cooperative agency comments, and I would again be remiss to actually call his name out, the County Surveyor, Jason Fuess, who was very instrumental in guiding staff to performing this very intuitive analysis. But yes, we will follow up pending the outcome of this item with BLM in remitting these comments.
Okay, thank you.
May I say something?
Certainly.
I want to thank Mr. Lautowski, and most of all, I want to thank all the people who've been writing us and calling us about this issue and putting it on our radar. That's what we depend on, the people who are out there, and, and for showing up today and writing the letters and meeting with BLM. We really appreciate it. I've learned so much about this issue because of it.
Thank you. I just have one comment before we go on to listening to the people that have signed up. Mr. Lautowski, I want to make sure I've got my numbers fairly, fairly tight here. BLM is proposing in the neighborhood of five thousand, is it five thousand six hundred total miles?
Correct, five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven, rounded up to fifty-six.
Five, five, six, seven. Their proposed closure is sixteen hundred--
And twenty-two. One thousand six hundred and twenty-two.
And through our findings, we find a hundred and seventy-two miles of RS-2477s that we intend to retain, correct?
Those represent the amount of roads proposed for closure that the county may be able to assert its RS-2477 standing.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure I had the numbers right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a number of people wanting to speak to this item this morning. Mr. Rick Swatz?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. My name's Rick Swatz. I live at twenty-nine hundred Meconico Road in Golden Valley. I've prepared a little information that we haven't covered before. We've all talked a little bit, I believe, but I'd like to start out with, according to the study released in July by the Outdoor, Outdoor Industry Association, last year trail users in Arizona spent twenty-one point two billion dollars. Based on that and a two thousand and two study done by Arizona State University that strictly covered off-road users, I extrapolate that trail users in Mojave County spend one point seven six billion dollars annually. We have a significant impact. It's not just off-road trail users, but it's hikers, equestrians, motorcycles, bicycles, everything. But closing trails means losing income, it means losing jobs. Sales tax on that money is about four million dollars for the county. In two thousand and two, there were one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine jobs created in Mojave County by the off-road industry, motorized off-road industry. That's two thousand and two. We didn't have side-by-sides in two thousand and two, and if you look around and see all those side-by-sides, you'll figure out there's a lot more jobs dependent on it now than there were in two thousand and two. The county's trails are too valuable a resource to be placed under the hands of Washington-appointed bureaucrats. The situation begins benignly enough, we post the trails are closed on a, on a map, and they take them off the map, and then, fine, everybody gets to still drive on them, but then the next guy comes in, and we get a new president, and he changes the directive, and somebody finds the money to get a bulldozer to go out and actually physically close those trails. It's happened all over the country, and it's going to happen here. It will happen. We can't control what happens in Washington. That's something that's beyond us. One of the recommendations I'd like to make here is that we establish an intergovernmental agreement with BLM and Mojave County, so that the county has as much say or significant say on every single trail as the Bureau of Land Management has to say, so that we can actually study these closures and look at them objectively. In order to do that, I propose that you establish a new commission. I'll explain where I'm coming from about that. When I lived in Tucson, I was a member of a group called the Pima County City of Tucson Bicycle Advisory Committee. We had representatives from the city and the county, various branches of the city and county, we had representatives of various user groups. In our case, it'd be a different bunch of user groups, but in that case, it was bicycling groups. We made a recommendation that they add bike lanes to every arterial or feeder street in Tucson. Now, forty, thirty-some years later, it's one of the cycling capitals of the world. Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Swatz. We'll take your item under consideration, and Supervisor Bishop and I'll get back with Robert Smith?
Good morning, Chairman and Board. May I approach with a handout?
Certainly. If you'll give them to the clerk.
Good morning, Chairman and Board and all else that is here. Some of the stuff that Rick said is kind of a--
If you'll give your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm sorry. My name's Robert Smith, and I live at nine oh six Yucca Street, Bullhead City, and I retired to Bullhead City in two thousand and ten. I'm involved with numerous off-road groups and organizations throughout Arizona State and the Western United States, and I've been doing it in the off-road community since I was just a youngster. I come here today as a member of the Bullhead Four Wheelers with a concerted interest with the BLM Travel Management Plan, and my wife and I do, we spend hundreds of hours on the trails out here in our Jeep in this wonderful desert. And I kind of like to keep this a little on the latter side, but imagine if ADOT or Mojave County Road Department did a very quiet study over ten or more years and announced very quietly to the public that they had a plan to close nearly thirty percent of all the state highways or county roadways. I'm quite sure that would cause an outrage. Oh, and by the way, we will only give you, the public, three weeks to review and comment on this plan. Well, to me, that's exactly what BLM has done to us. Their document is so ill-prepared and confusing that I found it nearly impossible to make any sense out of their motive for the massive closures, and I do quote a member of the club of Arizona Rough Riders that stated in a correspondence to Mr. Matt Driscoll, who is our outdoor recreation planner for Kingman BLM Office, quote, "This process to include the BLM website is extremely confusing, and actually, their website is flawed, confusing, and not ready for primetime. The average person with average computer skills will not understand the BLM website and will be so confused, confused, they won't be able to give proper input to BLM," end of quote. And yes, I found that was exactly the case for me. I spent many hours on that website trying to figure out what was going on. However, Mr. Driscoll met with a small committee from Bullhead Four Wheelers and listened to our concerns. He then did an extensive effort preparing for a return meeting that we had last Thursday. He spent over five hours with us going over the maps, and he addressed with his expertise to the comments some of, and made some clarification, that we were able to get our comments correctly inputted into the proposed closures. There was a lot of missing inventory that, where we overlaid our maps on their maps that they did not have on their plan, so their plan was really incomplete, and a lot of the red trails or the closed trails really were in areas that were of historic value. And then I have spent considerable amount of time over the last few weeks meeting with owners of shops that sell off-road vehicles, equipment such as Jeeps, ATVs, UTVs, and the first question usually was, how did I find out about this meeting? We were very lucky that Matt emailed us with it, and I know I'm running over my time, but I'll try to finish up here real quickly. He sent an email to our club, is the only reason I knew about it. Even when I met with Mayor Brady of Bullhead City, he was not aware of the extreme extent of the plan. And Rick already covered the economic impact. In closing, I ask, if possible, that this board will submit a request for the comment period to be extended at least another two months, and that BLM put forth an effort to notify-- to notify the public of their plan so that the actual public out here, us, the users that are spending the money, will know about it. And I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for your support, and I especially want to give special thanks to Supervisor Angus for meeting with me and following through on this whole process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Questions for the gentleman?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Doug Wisdom. I live at 10175 North Ambush up out in Valley Vista. I really want to address the, what will happen if you don't act and a number of other agencies, for that matter. I come out of California. When I was around 30 years of age, I discovered off-road riding motorcycles. Early 70s, I saw the beginning of the BLM action that virtually closed down the bulk of the high desert in California. I'm talking about 100 miles wide and 150 miles beyond. Big, big area. And little by little, they would take away areas and stop clubs from having events, not issuing permits and whatnot. What happened is all those riders wound up in a couple of small areas, places like El Mirage and Johnson Valley. And those places look like soap bins today. They do not look like a desert. They're destroyed. It'd take 100, 150 years for it to ever come back, if it did. It's just dead. Then we look at the economy of this thing. I've got friends that used to have a business in Ridgecrest. It's a good 75 to 100 miles north of Hesperia, California, which is there on the I-15. There's little towns around that, Ransburg, Red Mountain. Those towns are dead now. Their buildings are still there, but there's no people there. We used to visit these places. We'd have lunch there. We'd sometimes have to get repairs at the mechanics that were in these places. They're gone. All those people, they just can't go there anymore, at least not in any kind of a group, a large group. Then we get into this situation of the economy even down close to the area that, you know, just over the mountain from Hesperia. There's a lot of money that's spent. I don't know if Rick got into this or not, but a lot of money gets spent by the off-road community. Not only just, you know, stopping for a meal, but also buying the machinery, repairing the machinery, you know, just generally, oh, you know, seeing something you want to buy that has nothing to do with what we do, but it's, you know, a memento of our trip or whatever it happens to be. We're losing that if we allow BLM to get that much of a foothold that they're trying right here. It's going to affect Kingman. It's going to affect everybody, any other small town, Bullhead, right on down the line. It'll come. It'll take a number of years, but believe me, you don't want to see the results of things like Johnson Valley in California. Take a hard look at this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. And hopefully, we will gain some of your wisdom throughout the day. I'd like to make a comment that certainly as a member of the Board of Supervisors, that the multiple use doctrine is a very important doctrine that BLM often overlooks as part of their responsibility. It's their responsibility to manage that multiple use, not close it down. And so, I can speak for myself and the Board will speak unitedly here in a moment, but I would certainly like to recommend that we extend the comment period at least 180 days, more than just the 90, and really go to bat, make sure that any closures has a valid purpose for closure and a real in-depth analysis. But that's just my comment. John Guyer?
Good morning, Chairman Watson, Board. My name is John Guyer, 3786 Taos Lake Havasu. I'm speaking for myself. I am also the founding president of the largest side-by-side club in the nation, Havasu Side-by-Side, over 700 members. I'm also the marketing director for the Arizona Peace Trail, trying to get economics and keep the little towns here viable. And I'm also a state commissioner for the Arizona State Parks and Trails for Off-Highway. Again, I'm speaking for myself. I am very disappointed in the BLM at this point. I was assured that this comment period would not close during this summer so that all people would be able to hear this. Things have changed in Havasu. We had a four A-B-C-D program, and I see that not happening here in Kingman, and this is also happening down in the Bowes region in La Paz. Things have changed. I hope that you can encourage the BLM to extend the period, make the website and the commenting work. It doesn't. It's very sad to see what the BLM is doing right now to the number of closures that they have proposed for this area. Off-roading is obviously, with the largest club in the nation just down the road, very vital to this county and the economics and the enjoyment of the people that live here. So I hope that you guys can extend and open up their eyes a little wider to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guyer. Jim Ott?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Jim Ott. I live at 1007 Riverfront in Bullhead City. And I was just surprised by reading this small article in the newspaper yesterday. Had no idea this was going on. Couldn't agree more with the people who already spoke and told you about the economic impact that the industry has. I'd just like to tell you about a little personal experience. You know, I grew up in the town of Bensonville, a little bit west of Chicago, and I used to read the Arizona Highways Magazine. And I just thought, my goodness, that would be such a fantastic place to see. Now, I was fortunate enough to see it and vacation here for 50 years. And by the time I was 71, I was able to buy a house here in Bullhead. So these last five years, however, now, don't get me wrong, I've been to the Grand, I've hiked the Grand Canyon, I've been to Sedona, I've been all the way down to Douglas and et cetera. But this is the most magnificent state that there is, really. And you really don't get to see the state driving down the road. I mean, you've driven back and forth to Bullhead, I'm sure, and seen Finger Mountain out there. Now, it's a real impressive rock.
Pardon me, sir?
However, how many of you have actually driven up next to it, stood at the bottom of it, and looked up? Now, that, ah, see? Now, that is an impressive rock.
Yes, it is.
How about when you come up over the top of the pass there and you're up at the top of the pass, you can't kind of look down, but you know that there is an old gas station down there with two or three former motel rooms down there. Really a neat place to take visitors. I mean, everybody really gets a kick out of seeing that. And we were down there looking up at the hill and there was a family of sheep, of the longhorn sheep looking down.
I can probably age myself a little bit, but I stopped at that gas station.
[laughing]
And bought ice several times.
But there are so many places here in this...
Owners Verrof Frainer.
So many places in Arizona and in this county that we really, really don't want to lose. I mean, the BLM and the Sierra Club says they want to save it for our, they want to protect it. They want to save it. Well, I'm sorry, I don't understand that because you save it, but nobody can go there. You save it for what? For so nobody can see it. Make a long story short, been to the Peace Trail, the Walupis up to, driven all the way to Flagstaff. And you protect, protect what you have, please. Do all of us a favor and please do what you can do and even more. Thank you.
And thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Supervisors, for putting this item on the agenda to start with, and thank all the other speakers that have been here. Again, I'm Chuck Brinkley, 5137 Concho Circle, Golden Shores, Arizona, and the president of the Golden Shores Off-Roaders. And I also operate, my wife and I operate a little grocery store in Golden Shores that is highly dependent on our wintertime visitors, who a large, large percentage of them are off-road enthusiasts and our summertime visitors that use our public waters as well. Just want to reiterate what everybody else says here, that economic impact that off-roading has on our community is huge. And just that little, I'd love to encourage the Board to, yeah, just to get that, if we can get that comment period extended and so that maybe we can understand. I'm another one of those that I try to pass the information on to my club as I get it. And if I can't understand it, I can't pass it on. I can't sit here and speak to you intelligently about it because I can't understand the information the BLM has given us. Anyways, I just want to thank you guys for putting this on the agenda and listening to all the speakers and, you know, here are taxpayers and voters that care about this issue. Thank you, guys.
And thank you, sir. I'll give anyone else one more opportunity. Anyone else wishing to speak to item 33 briefly? There you go. Penny Pugh, please come down. I was hoping that Congressman Gosar's office would be represented on this item. Thank you.
Yes. Penny Pugh, I'm from Gold Canyon, and my car mostly. Chairman Watson, members of the Board. Congressman Gosar, as the chairman of the Western Caucus, has dealt with the BLM on this and certainly other issues where they have trouble defining public use. We will be happy to help extend this. I was on the phone with one of the gentlemen, asking them to extend the comment period. His comment was that everyone can do it online. And clearly, he doesn't understand rural Arizona and needs to, that needs to be extended. I can't guarantee the 180 days. I think that we'll do our best and we'll work with you, Chairman Watson. I know we have a meeting with Congressman on Wednesday. Let's bring that up to him and let's see if we can't help the BLM understand the economic impact that this is going to bring. Any questions? I have my card afterwards if anyone wants to give me.
I have a question. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm so hoping that you were going to say that. That's so lucky to have you here. In your experience, because the public comment period ends tomorrow, I believe.
Correct.
Is that true?
Correct.
Have you ever seen it opened up after the fact again?
Not generally. However, I'm fairly free this afternoon. I think I'll make a visit to the BLM's office this afternoon after getting the okay from the Congressman. I suspect it'll be a go, just to go and ask them to reconsider so that...
Would it help to have some kind of declaration or resolution from this board to have with you? Would that help?
Resolutions always help. They carry weight. Certainly, you represent all the voters that put you in office to act on their behalf. So I would say yes.
And another reason why it's important, when we met, and BLM has been very open and, you know, honest and forthcoming with the information, and I want to thank them for that. But there's still some, a lot of questions. And when we were there on, we were there on Friday, Regina Cobb, myself, and Mayor Brady. And Mayor Brady, for whatever reason, Bullhead City wasn't made aware. We don't know where the ball got dropped. It just did. So his concern was that their meeting is tomorrow, so it was too late to get anything on the agenda to extend the comment period. And so, I know that Bullhead City would like that extended time as well.
Okay. Supervisor, the Forest Service and the BLM both are under congressional mandate every 10 years to revisit a travel management plan. They are overdue, I think maybe eight years overdue on this. So I'm not, that was our comment to them is why the rush.
They told us, they told us that it was, you know, a funding, that they couldn't apply for extra funding until they had this. And there were a lot of good things about this as well, right? They said people come in and the most, one of the biggest things, people come into their offices to get maps for the trails. And that is a very important thing, to get the map of the trails.
Well, it is important. However, you've heard from several of the outdoor groups here that I suspect have. I know I was in a meeting in La Paz County and they volunteered to help with some of the funding costs on that. So I think from, from our point of view, managing doesn't mean closing. Managing means finding other creative ways to not say no, but to say yes, and let's figure out together how to do that.
Thank you.
So.
Ms. Pugh, do you believe that we'd be more successful if we asked for less than 180 days, somewhere in the neighborhood of 90 or to 120? What's your opinion?
This is, I've already asked for, we've already gotten and helped with that 30-day extension. I don't have an opinion. I think what we're just going to do is go in and ask for 180 and maybe they'll give us 60.
That'd be great. We'll support 180.
Or I guess we could ask for 365 and maybe they'll give us 30. You know, I never know. But I'm certainly willing to go in and advocate so that we can get some more comments in an efficient manner and not something that's rushed.
Any further questions for Ms. Pugh?
No. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Penny.
I do have a comment, though.
Supervisor Bishop?
I just wanted to say that I'm very much in support of off-roaders and our trails on public lands. I'm also in support of the trails like the Peace Trail and the Sun Country Trail that we've been talking about recently in Mojave County. And I think we, everybody here can agree that the BLM is tasked with managing our public lands, not closing them off. But I think there are some improvements, some roads that probably do need to be closed according to conversations I've had with off-roaders. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion that this board write a resolution recommending that the BLM extend the comment period 180 days, keeping open the list of RS 2477 roads that Director Lakowski submitted, and keep all the other roads and trails open unless there's a compelling reason for closure. And I think there are some roads that do need to be closed. So keeping that in mind, that is my motion.
Okay.
Discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Esplin.
We can do that motion. I'm just following it. We can do that motion because what we're doing is we're relating exactly to what was put on the agenda, talking about ways that we can keep these roads open through RS 2477 or other legal means. We would ask, we're asking the BLM for initial 180 days so that we can, so that those, so that information can be presented to them and discussed with them and try to persuade them.
Very good. I just wanted to make sure that we passed the puff test.
Sure.
Another question. Is that, is it something that can happen immediately because of the deadline is tomorrow?
Well, we could work on it as quickly as we can. We'll try our best to get it done, but try to get forth a resolution.
Okay.
I mean, I've got this afternoon to do it.
For Ms. Pugh to hand-carry to BLM, probably be accomplished by this afternoon. I'm sure our staff could handle that.
I could, supervisor, or excuse me, County Manager Hendricks, your thoughts on that? Get it done by today? No?
We'll do the best we possibly can.
We'll do the best we possibly can and try to get something out.
And keep in mind that the board won't be able to see it. You'll be asking us to write the resolution and then send it forth.
Authorize the chairman's sign.
If that's what the board wishes in your motion.
I'll admit my, a motion to authorize the chairman to sign once it's prepared.
Thank you.
Before I give my second, can I, I just want to say something else before we end this issue. There was a couple of really good ideas and comments, and the one I really like is to have a commission of people who actually, I don't remember who said it, but I thought that that was a great idea because again, you're the guys who are out there. You know it, you hear it, and we count on you, just like any advisory board. So if that is something that maybe we could throw on a separate agenda, I don't know what it takes to put together an advisory council.
We could follow up on the next agenda.
Okay. Okay. So with that, I will give the second to Supervisor Bishop's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second proposing a resolution for the extension of 180 days for the BLM closures. Are you, Madam Clerk, clear on your, on the motion and second? Very good. Okay. Then I'll ask, call for the questions. There being none, I feel, roll call, please.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sure you want to sit through the rest of this meeting. Make yourself comfortable. On to item number 34. Sitting as the Board of Directors for the Golden Valley Improvement District Number One, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the adoption of the Golden Valley Improvement District Resolution 2018-03, and accept the owner's request for property addition to the Golden Valley Improvement District Number One for Block Nine of Block O of the Golden Sage Ranchels, Unit 61, and approve the establishment of a new boundaries of the improvement district as per the Arizona Revised Statutes 48-906E. I have no one signed up for this item. And I believe this is in Supervisor Bishop's district. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And...
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I will make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, item number 34.
Second.
And second, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 35. Sitting as the Board of Directors for the Golden Valley Improvement District Number One, discussion, possible action regarding the approval of the adoption of the Golden Valley Improvement District Resolution 2018-04, and accept the owner's request for property addition to the Golden Valley Improvement District Number One for Lot Six of Block H, Golden Sage Ranchels, Unit 58, and approve the establishment of a new boundaries of the improved, improvement district as per the Arizona Revised Statutes 48-906E.
Chairman Watson, same motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval from Supervisor Bishop, second Supervisor Angus. Any further questions? There being no further questions, those in favor, by Madam Clerk, if you'll manage the roll.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. On to item number 36. Discussion, possible action, acknowledge the receipt of the Economic and Public Relations Job Description Associated Position Worksheet and Direct Staff of Moving Forward with the Recruitment. This was initiated by Supervisor Angus. Would you like to start with discussion?
Yeah, just for a little history, when our Economic Development Director resigned, we talked about maybe tweaking the job description and making it sort of a combination Economic Development, Communications Director, PIO, Government Liaison, a lot of stuff. So we asked administration to come back with the job description and, oh boy, they came back with quite the job description. It was everything but the kitchen sink. And so I've had a few weeks to sort of think about it, and I hope everybody, all the other supervisors have as well. I do think it's important to have a central office where information can go through. Right now, the departments write their own press releases and do a pretty good job for the most part. And, but again, is that the best use of time all around? I know where a lot of these press releases come from. The Health Department will be having a new Health Director soon. So I think sort of for continuity and the well-running of any organization, it's good to have one office where the information flows, one office where the media knows they can go to. And so I would like it to be sort of more defined. And personally, and we talked about this many years ago when we were discussing our membership in CSA, that it would be, it would be advantageous for us to have somebody who could be that liaison with the state during session so we have our specific needs heard. And so I would like that position to, to be more of that. So I think less away from Economic Development. Again, I saw it originally as a point, a point office. So if a company wants to relocate here, that would be the first stop. They can get their information, demographics, things like that. And then I think each of the cities are, have their own. I mean, we can work together. But I was seeing this more as a communication. So I, it was last minute, but I, I emailed Craig Sullivan from CSA, and I asked him if he could find any job descriptions for a Communications Director from the midsize counties. We're considered midsize. There's small, medium, and large. So he sent me this morning, and that was very gracious for him to do this to me at last minute, the job description for the Communications Director for Yuma County, which is a similar, is a lot of their issues, we have similar issues to them. And as you can see, it's, has a lot more geared towards that, that legislative work that I would like to see. So I would like this to be pared down more to, to a more communications liaison. And again, I don't, I don't see us leaving CSA now, but I would like to have our specific issues heard more. And this is a position I think that that can go through. So that's how I'd like to start the discussion.
Okay, would you...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I weigh in on this a little bit?
Mr. Hendricks, please.
All right. You know, inherently, well, to address Supervisor Angus's issues, we did write in, and I know it's, it's a mammoth job description, but when you try to combine, you know, that many different duties, it's difficult to eliminate some. And believe me, we eliminated a lot because the page numbers that we're presenting to the board are pretty close to the page numbers that were for Economic Development. So we were able to write in important things. Sir is Chief Public Information Officer during county emergencies, you know, takes in all the, is a central focus on taking in all the information. We also even included language in the job description regarding being a legislative liaison. So we tried to cover every base. And, but I did want to weigh in from an administrative perspective that inherently Economic Development, when you have an Economic Development Director, even I as county administrator didn't have a full grasp of the importance and the day-to-day duties that that position entails. And now I do, because I am one.
You're doing.
Since the departure of Bennett Bradley, believe it or not, he's been totally engaged in our economic development. But we've got, I believe, in that Mojave County and our cities are on the cusp of incredible improvements. That's what I believe because I, I see it out there. And I've really gotten an education in the past couple of months regarding how much activity there actually is and how much I have to provide. I spent, you know, I did take about three days off. All three days I, I spent doing Economic Development and trying to provide information to about four companies who are looking at our area and trying to relocate. And they ask everything from, they're expecting me to be a Realtor, they're expecting me to be knowledgeable about water, power, gas, and everything else. They, they want me to find properties for them, you know, not that I do that, but the amount of effort that was necessary is necessary to keep up with the Economic Development response needs is incredible. And I'm not going after companies. They, they're coming after here. So I believe since, you know, our opportunities at this time in Mojave County's life are so great, Economic Development is probably the most important of the three areas that we're looking at. And that's what I'd recommend to the board to focus on. And that's what we tried to do in the job description. Possibly, you know, just my opinion, and of course it's up to the board, I believe also, as Supervisor Angus stated, PIOs are incredibly important to an organization. And I'm with you on that. I think we could do a lot better job promoting our organization to the public and to keeping, keeping the public informed and to showcase different areas of things that we do well. And we do a lot of things well. So I'm kind of at a loss a little bit. If I'm going to rewrite this to a strict PIO, you know, what I would be recommending to the board is, you know, once again, separate the positions. But I'm hoping that by combining the positions, don't lose focus on Economic Development, keep a strong focus on Public Information Officer, have it on the side that he will be required or she will be required to do the legislative liaison when necessary and assist us with that. And try to move forward with something and hope there's a, that, that special person out there that we can recruit.
Chairman Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
I thank you very much for that. And, you know, maybe it was just a function that we weren't really kept in the loop, the board, on how much economic, and again, it also has to do with the economy. So in the beginning, I think, you know, we were in a lower economy, but now things are booming. I think everyone can agree in our county, see it in Bullhead, you know, Havasu here in Kingman. So if, if Mike Hendricks says that now that he's doing it, it's, it's a lot, I believe you. And if I was wrong, I was wrong. And if you think we need, you know, someone just for Economic Development, that's something I don't want to stand in the way of because that is where our money comes from. And I'm not going to go against anything that's going to bring in more money for the county. So I would be amenable to change this. However, I do think we need a PIO. So, you know, since we are growing, our revenue is bigger, you know, maybe we could have two positions and see how that goes.
Thank you Supervisor Angus. And I'll chime in a little bit, my thoughts, the things that are extremely important for us to have.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes, Supervisor Wakamoto.
Yes. Could I just comment that, as Supervisor Angus said, the cities have Economic Development Departments. However, District Five is totally counting. And there is, they are on the cusp of Economic Development right now. And having somebody focus on Economic Development in those areas that are not connected to a city is very important for the county. Because as we grow, those are the areas that will be looked at to grow. So even though we need a PIO, I really feel that we need to still stay focused on Economic Development as well.
Thank you Supervisor Wakamoto. That encapsulates my thoughts pretty darn close. I firmly believe that we need a PIO. There's too much that goes on in Mojave County that's not brought forth to the community as they should know, good, bad, or indifferent. So I'm certainly in favor of the PIO and the PIO working as legislative liaison. Also, on the flip side of this, I would be very much in favor of bringing back our Economic Development Direct, Director as a very important part of Mojave County's function. It's essential that we seek new industry and new employment all the time. It's incumbent upon us to do that for several reasons, not only for the health, welfare of our citizenry, but it also reduces our taxes. So with that, those are my comments. But it's your item, so if you'd like to make a motion for, for narrowing it to PIO today and possibly Economic Development at an ex...
Okay. Are we ready for a motion? Does anyone else?
Actually, I have a comment or two.
Supervisor Bishop?
What? Isn't it past the deadline?
I didn't hear.
He's referring to the request to speak forums that you have us pick up at 9:30 because they're not back there anymore. He's referring to the fact there's none up there.
But I'll certainly give you the opportunity to speak. Supervisor-elect Ron Gill. And then we'll...
And then I'd like to comment.
Then we'll entertain Supervisor Bishop and Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, staff. Those slips are picked up at 9:30.
Yes, sir, per the instruction of the chairman.
Thank you. Apparently, you're looking for a bureaucratic Superman that is going to be a Public Information Officer, a lobbyist, and an economic developer?
That was on the table.
Okay. I don't think that person exists.
You're correct.
So I think you're barking up the wrong tree. On the Public Information Officer issue, you've went without one for six years. And I would argue that, that the salary range that I saw was somewhere between $80,000 and $120,000. And I would make the argument that that money would be better spent by hiring a new sheriff's deputy, by hiring another road grader, or by hiring somebody else on the road maintenance crew. You each are politicians and you can speak for yourselves. I'm a politician, I can speak for myself. I don't need a mouthpiece to speak for me. The county manager can speak for himself and so can the department heads, and they can go through the county manager if they so choose. The last time you had a Public Information Officer as a state senator, I found it to be a disaster. I don't want to revisit that because I think it actually caused friction between the legislature and between the Board of Supervisors. But I stand for questions.
Okay. May I, thank you. And of course, there's history all around. And you're right, that last PIO got a little bit more political than I think the intent and the intent that this, that a future PIO would have. But I think you're seeing it sort of a narrow lens. I don't see it as a spokesman for the politicians or for the bureau. It's, it's to get information to the taxpayers and the citizens. And, you know, when, when you're here and you'll see, it's, it's, it's part of a much larger job that frankly, I don't think that we're doing as, as best as we can. So when I first did this, just so you know, the, the Economic Director resigned. So at that time, I didn't think, and I don't think I'm alone with the board, that it wasn't something that we thought was as successful as it could have been. And if I was wrong, I was, that's what we're talking about today. I stand corrected. So I think the most important thing is the Economic Development person. I do think it was, the PIO is important. I don't see it as an either or, but if, if we only can do one in our budget, I would, at this point, I've changed my mind a bit, and I would go for the Economic Development because that is the one that brings in the money. But, but again, you're looking at it like, like, from a narrow lens for the PIO because you were a state senator and you saw what they did. But I don't see that position. That position would not be that person. And I know, because when we came in, that person left, and we probably would have let that person go, I did not think that person did a good job as a PIO. So that's why we would be very careful to craft the job description to be as a person that would be the liaison with the community, not with the elected officials or even the administration. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, I still disagree with you. I think it's an unnecessary position, and I think that the taxpayers of Mojave County would much rather see that money spent on actual productive things than ask somebody to put out public information, which gets done anyway.
I respect that. Thank you.
Any further questions for Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you wanted to make a comment?
No, but I will. Right now, we have a bill of $12,000 a month we're paying on a lobbyist for our water. I believe that, same as Supervisor-elect Gould, that it's up to us to do the lobbying. We've had you in the past and other supervisors down with CSA covering our needs and issues. I know all of us weigh in on legislation that affects the county, so I don't see the need for somebody else going down who might not be able to represent the board or take the time to bring items to the board, so the board as a whole can give them directions. The PIO, I don't think we need a PIO. And if we're going to do economic development, I think the board needs to come together first with an economic vision as to what they want the county to do, because it's not fair to hire somebody until you have a vision from all five people that says, this is what we're looking for, because what my idea of economic development is might be different than the other members', and theirs might differ too. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Bishop?
Yes, I just wanted to publicly thank our county manager, Mike Hendricks, for stepping in as our economic development director, as well as his other duties.
And my staff, my staff has been instrumental.
I have to tell you that his door is always open, and often I go to him for information. And in the last couple of weeks, his door has been closed more than open, because he's been on the phone or on the computer doing economic development, plus his other duties. So I can tell you that during that time period, I've had meetings with people in regards to a wind farm, an airstrip, a propane dealership, a distribution center, and right after this meeting, I'm meeting with some mining investors that wanted information about chloride. So I think we're all standing in as the economic development person, and it's very taxing, and I miss Bennett Bradley. So I would be very much in support of replacing that position with the full-time economic development person. And initially, I thought splitting the position was a good idea, but during the last couple of weeks, I've come to realize that this is a full-time job, and as the county continues to grow, we might need an economic developer and maybe another, at least a part-time, to assist that person. I also would like to have a PIO, and I think it's, I don't know whether we could get by with a part-time PIO, or if there are other duties that we could give to the PIO to make that a full-time position, but I would be opposed to having a separate legislative liaison, because I think we all need input in that position. And as has already been mentioned, the other person that was hired to do that years back probably did more harm than good from what I've been reading about. So those are my comments. I would support a full-time economic development director and possibly a part-time PIO until we can find duties that would require a full-time PIO.
Supervisor Angus, your comment?
Okay, and like Supervisor Bishop, I have changed my mind too. Nothing, I don't want anything to stop the growth of Mojave County. So the motion I'd like to make is to bring back, separate the two. Just do an economic development job description and then do a PIO, and then we can decide. And I do think it's important to hear from our new supervisor on this as well, so we could make that decision based on new information.
So your motion then would be to concentrate on the economic development position?
Let's, well, for next time to bring back both, and then we can decide as a board which one, if, you know, either both of them or just one, how we want to go forward. But it's just, there's just so much in this job description, you're right, it's just too much.
So your motion would not be recruiting an economic development director immediately? Because I think we need them now.
You don't think it could wait two weeks? You'd want to, well, but we don't really have a real job description unless we use... I mean, let me ask Mike, do you think it's something that can wait to get a really, you know, succinct job description, or do you think it's like a matter of life or death?
We'd always change the job description in midterm. I would recommend, since we're splitting the duties, that we drop the range down to a 27 instead of a 29. I believe that gives me enough flexibility to where, with that broad sweeping range, I can hire in based on abilities and education and experience, but not at the 29 director level. So if we're moving forward, I still want, would like them to report to me. I think I originally talked about a 27. Maybe I didn't, but that's what I recall. And then we'll bring back, at the same time to ratify, the job description for a PIO, so the board can decide whether to move forward with that, if this is what the board chooses. But I'll go ahead and authorize if it's acceptable to the board to go ahead and advertise for the economic development director position with the existing job description.
Okay, I don't want to stand in the way of that, because my district is mostly an incorporated city, and, you know, I heard what you guys said and don't want to stop it, so if that's the way...
At a 27, yes.
Okay, then go for it.
Thank you. And your motion then?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, we have a motion, and...
I think Buster's on the...
And I believe someone was almost ready to make a second, but I'll recognize Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask what our vision is for economic development? I don't think the board's ever come together to have a vision. I don't see how we can advertise for a job when I have no idea what any of the other supervisors believe is economic development that we should be looking for, because it should be a focused economic development plan that we have on what we're looking to bring into Mojave County. Do we have a vision?
Mr. Chairman, I think the board approved our priority listing. I think we had a consultant come in, and if you recall, and it probably needs to be dusted off and redone, as Supervisor Johnson's probably referring to, and that's something an economic development director would do, and he'd bring his own vision and present that to the board and get your buy-in. But if you remember, you know, it talked about tourism, it talked about our number one priority was retail. One of the things that I wasn't aware of is that we almost had two box stores that were over a million square foot, and that would be a game changer for Mojave County if we would have landed one of those. Now we're looking at other things that aren't as large of game changers, but certainly could make a difference. So I believe, and I'll research it and resend it to the board, but I believe the board had a vision about five years ago on economic development that was presented and approved. And again, that needs to be dusted off and revisited.
Chairman Watson? May I ask Supervisor Johnson, how would you like to go forward? How do you see this happening?
Well, I would like to have a vision, so whether I win or lose on the, between all five of us, but I believe the county's role is to bring in industry, bring in the businesses that cannot be located inside the cities and let the cities have the retail. Not that we wouldn't bring in, you know, not that retail wouldn't come to Golden Valley, Chloride and those places, but that shouldn't be our main focus. We should be bringing in industry and then allowing the cities to take the housing or the housing to go in the county. I'm not saying we give it all to the cities, but that should be our focus, bringing in the jobs where there are 100, 200, 300 jobs at a time.
And I agree with Supervisor Johnson, and I think that was our vision a number of years ago. And I think it was the same vision that our prior economic development person had, so...
Chairman Watson?
We have a motion as proposed by Supervisor Angus.
And I'll second it.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call, we'll call.
I'm sorry, what, so long ago, what was the motion again?
Well, your original motion was to bring back two separate job descriptions. However, County Manager Hendricks mentioned being able to post, but that was not part of your motion.
Right, right. I need to clarify. We need to amend the motion to give the county administrator, the county manager, the ability to go ahead and post based on our last job description for the economic development director.
At, I believe, range 27?
At range 27.
And just to clarify, then, then...
Can I have one more question?
Go ahead.
Supervisor Johnson, yes?
Will this position be brought back to the board for a vote of the board to hire any applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, this is still going to be a director position, so basically, I will advertise, I will set up an interview panel, and we will shortlist unless the board so chooses a different mechanism than I'd bring the selection back in front of the board, so that the board could ask some questions and ratify my recommendation, like any other director position.
Did that answer your question?
Because I think the, it answers my question, Mr. Chairman, but I think an economic development director of any kind needs to know that they report to the board, that, that's just my opinion.
That's going to be difficult. From my experience on economic development, many of those talks are confidential, and many of the companies really only want to deal with one or two people at all in these entities, so it might be difficult to have an interface with the director of economic development with the entire board, other than a broad-brush informational report. So it may be difficult, but I understand where you're coming from.
Chairman Watson? So when Bennett was here, he reported, at the end, you wanted to change him as a direct report, but he did report to the board? That was how it had been structured?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, Bennett was a director by name, because we wanted to have that authority, that name recognition with the economic developer position, but he reported directly to the Development Services Director. And one of the incredible, I think, most important duties that that economic development director has is he's the advocate for developers coming into Mojave County, so when they go through the permitting process, he sets in on every one of the permitting meetings, and he has the authority to intervene on behalf of the developer and try to make things happen. If there's a roadblock that the developer hits, or some questions that the developer needs answered, he, his job is to try to, and that's part of the encouraging business, is to come to Mojave County, to make it as easy as possible on permitting and getting established in Mojave County. And that's why I had him reporting to Development Services. And I'll, when we do hire, or if we do hire an economic development director, I believe it's still important, even though he would report to me if that's what the board so chose, he would still have those duties over at Development Services.
And can we make sure that this person, you know, at least does a quarterly report in front of the board, to give us as much of, I know there's some things that you cannot discuss in public, but as much as possible, just to, and again, I think that was one of the problems in the end, I just think some of the communication, our fault, I'm not laying blame, but I think that was one of the issues, is that we weren't seeing or hearing much.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson, I believe, you wanted to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I agree with Supervisor Angus, I think that's the problem. I'm not saying that we need to be in on decisions being made, but reports need to be made, brought back to the board from time to time, and when you have something as important as the economic development director who's reporting to another director who's still below the county manager, who's still below the board, we're not getting the information. And I think as far as, you know, Mr. Hendricks was talking about, working through P and Z issues, some of that stuff needs to be brought to the board to make sure that they're doing exactly what we want done. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have clarification on the motion?
Yes, sir, I have an amended motion, I just needed an amended second.
Okay, very good.
I will second the amended motion.
Madam Clerk, call roll.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No, because I believe it should be brought back to the board with the description before we vote on it.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 37, discussion, possible action, acknowledge receipt of the City of Kingman's narrative for the fiscal year 2018 building discretionary grant application proposed highway project for I-11 East Kingman Connection project. That's the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway TI, and authorize the chairman of the board to sign a letter of support on behalf of the county.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Bishop?
At this time, I'm recruiting myself from any and all discussion and participation in this item. Because of a conflict of interest, the proposed highway project for I-11, the East Kingman Connection, or Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, would affect and impact real property that some of my family members own in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, and recognized. Thank you Supervisor Bishop.
Okay, well, then I'll make the motion to approve item, where are we?
37.
37 as written.
Thank you, and I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call roll.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto? Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 38, discussion, possible action, support the legislative proposal amending Title 45, Chapter 2, Article 4 of Arizona Revised Statutes, reference title, West Basin Advisory Councils. This is draft legislation attached and authorized, a proposal to be submitted to the County Supervisors Association, requesting their consideration and support at the upcoming summit.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve item 38?
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second. Questions? There being no questions, Supervisor, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 39, discussion, possible action, discuss the current state of prescription opioid litigation being conducted in Arizona and across the nation. Direct Mojave County Attorney's Office and the Procurement Department to review the Maricopa County contract, and if that contract allows for cooperative purchasing, authorize the county manager to sign an agreement utilizing the Maricopa County contract to formalize representation for Mojave County to join the prescription opioid litigation. If the contract with Maricopa County will not allow for cooperative purchasing, authorize Mojave County Attorney's Office and the Procurement Department to... to issue a solicitation for representation in this matter. Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. Okay, several months ago, we had a presentation here from a law firm, I believe they were out of California, asking us if we wanted to be involved in a class-action lawsuit. There's a lot of lawsuits going on against manufacturers, drug companies, for the... And for those of you who are on the phone, I'm doing air quotes, "the opioid crisis" in our country. And at that time, we had a discussion about it. And if I remember correctly, I believe Supervisor Johnson said he didn't like class-action lawsuits, and neither do I. I don't like class-action lawsuits. I don't like any of it. But here's the deal, they're happening, with or without us, they're going to happen. And I think it's one of these things, I have to put my personal thoughts aside for and do what's right for the community. As of now, in Arizona, I believe there are, how many, five or six counties have already signed up? And some cities, Kingman being one of them. And, you know, how I look at it is, in 10 years, and of course, this won't happen tomorrow, but if and when the time comes and there is a settlement, and there is money to be had, I don't want anybody to look back and say, "Why wouldn't the supervisors in 2018 get on board this class-action lawsuit?" Because it costs us no money. There's basically no skin off our back. It's just, you know, it's whatever... All the different legal firms have their own... How much we're going to get back, they work on contingency, and so that's why I brought it back. I just think that I want to do what's right for the citizens, and if there's money to be had for the local counties, who really are, if you're going to buy into the crisis, we are ground zero for that. And that is why a lot of the law firms want us, because we have been identified, like it or not, by our Governor. And that's another thing, and Supervisor Johnson, and I appreciated this, wanted to put in some more backup information into this about that thing, about a lot of the misinformation that's out there about the opioid crisis. And I don't think I'm alone in my thinking to say that when the government declares something an emergency, it just gives them an excuse to go in and take it over and do stuff and pass more legislation. And that's exactly what we saw here in the state. They had an emergency session, and they passed things very quickly, much too quickly. And I think the state realizes that. I've had discussions with the Governor personally about some of the unintended consequences of that rushed legislation. And I think he agrees it was rushed. And one of the things that was promised, and the backup material that Supervisor Johnson put in, is that we were promised that no one who legitimately needs the medication for their quality of life, that would not affect pain management patients, but it has. I mean, no one can argue about that now. So this... Although the two have really nothing to do with each other, it's all part of this thing that we're talking about in our country is the opioid. And we want to make sure that... And I've heard it, I know we've all heard from our constituents about it, about not being able to get that kind of medication if they need it. I know how it's affected my life personally, and probably other people in this room. So I just want everyone to know that although we're... I am suggesting we do join in this class action. We're also working hard to tweak the state legislation. And the Governor has promised me personally that they will make it a top priority. We have a committee together of stakeholders, and by stakeholders, I mean how... This legislation through the state has affected a lot of people. And it's affected not only the patients, but the pain management doctors, their hospitals, the pharmacies. And we have a committee together that will work with the state. Regina, our legislator, Regina Cobb, is the Chairman of the Health Committee, and she has promised to bring this up as one of her top priorities. So I'm asking Supervisor Johnson, I know how passionate you are about this, and I hope that you will come and join our committee and make sure that that gets rectified. But this part, getting in this class-action lawsuit, doesn't... Isn't any part of that. This is just something I think that, as you're a representative of the people, that I feel that I have to do in case down the line there is money that could be used for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Mojave County.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus. So would it...
I have some questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, and I guess these would... I don't know if Supervisor Angus would have the answers, maybe the County Attorney or County Manager. Have we thought this through to find out if monies are collected, what does Mojave County plan on doing with them?
If I could answer that?
Mr. Esplin?
We don't have an answer to that because we don't know how much money will be collected, if any money will be collected. It is on a classic contingent fee basis. The collection of any money will be contingent upon how much is awarded, whether the plaintiffs succeed, and then how much damages would come. So we don't know the answer to that. And just to give a little bit more clarification and information about this, Supervisor Angus referred many times to a class-action suit. Technically, this is not a class-action suit. And I understand what you're getting at. It looks and feels like a class-action suit, but actually, it's not. It's a multi-jurisdictional suit. And so there are presently 1,100 individual lawsuits that are going forward. A class-action is where you bring all the lawsuits and you put it into one. This is the exact opposite. There are one individual lawsuit for each individual plaintiff that is suing. So there's 1,100 different lawsuits currently pending, and there could be more that could be coming forward. And once this is resolved, there could then be additional lawsuits to come after that. So that's just something from a legal standpoint, we've got to understand. So for this multi-jurisdictional approach, what is happening is all of the cases that are being filed are funneled into one district, so that one judge is handling it, the judge in the Northern District of Ohio. And the judge there has selected four cases, or four plaintiff's cases, that he feels is best, represents as best that he can, the rest of the plaintiffs. And so two of them... And this is being explained from the attorney that contacted us about this. Two of them are large cities, and then the other two are kind of a county. And the other one, I believe, is a tribe, a Native American tribe. And then, so those cases will move forward. Those four main cases will move forward. They're set for trial in September. And so all the other plaintiffs that are involved, they are working various different components and pieces to help and assist with those four cases. And so they've broken it down into various different committees. And in those committees, various different attorneys will work. One group will work on this particular discovery, another group will work on this particular discovery, and another work on this particular discovery. And then they'll all funnel back to those four cases, that multi... Those four main cases. And those will either settle, or they will go to trial. And then based on how that outcome will be, then the remaining cases can then say, "Okay, this is what it looks like. This is what a jury is thinking. This is what a jury is probably going to give us if we go with this." That's kind of how it's working right now.
Thank you. I can't believe I didn't know that. By your professional... How long? I mean, is it... Doing it this way, is it quicker than a class-action? Or is it, being that it's broken out and there's so many? I mean, what sort of the conventional wisdom on that?
I've never litigated a class-action suit. I'm very unfamiliar with the litigation aspect of class-action suits. I'm familiar with them just because in general, I've participated in class actions. I think we all have. At some point, we've been... We've received something in the mail that says, "Hey, there's a class-action suit", and you recover 10 bucks, or 100 bucks, or however much. This is... In terms of how long it's going to go, from what I've read, what I've researched, the judge that's handling this wants to move along as quickly as he can. I think that a lot of people have been critical of him, thinking that it's very unrealistic. Originally, the trial was supposed to take place in March of 2019. That's been moved back to September of 2019. And I think, and from what I understand, attorneys still are concerned that that is too soon. So I don't think it's going to get resolved anytime soon. And we just don't know how much there's going to be any recovery, if that. I mean, there's just so many variables and so many unknowns. The best example that you can look at is perhaps the cigarette cases that took place in the '90s, some of the housing issues, the mortgage issues that took place recently in the late 2000s, or, excuse me, about 2009, 2010. Those are your best comparisons as to how this could play out.
Thank you, Mr. Esplin. Also... Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, I ask you, Mr. Esplin, if you would explain the division of possible monies recovered, the percentages, because they're getting extremely high. From my understanding, the law firm gets all their monies back, expended monies to begin with, and then there's some more divisions of how much of the gross proceeds they get, or net proceeds, I guess, that they would get. Can you explain what percentage the insurance companies or the attorneys will be taking?
Sure. So this is a classic contingent fee basis. It is contingent upon how much that they can win and succeed. You eat what you kill, so to speak. So if they recover a certain amount, and if you look at the contract, there's two different divisions. If they recover a certain amount, what they'll do is they will then take their expenses from that. They will take whatever expenses they put into it. The expenses for litigation, the expenses for discovery, the expenses for trial, whatever it is, they will take it from that recovery. Then there's two different types of recovery. They will... For their cut, they will take 15% before entry of final judgment, if damages claims up to 500 million. So if they settle, for example, they would take 15% of that, and then the county would take the remaining amount. If it goes... If there's an entry of judgment after trial, so they go to trial and there's an entry of judgment that comes after, then they would take 18%. And again, that's up to 500,000. Once you hit the 500,000 threshold, if the sums exceed...
500 million.
Thank you, I'm sorry, 500 million. Thank you, Chairman. If the sum exceeds 500 million, then a 10% fee on the additional amount recovered in excess of 500,000. Then for the... After entry of judgment, it's 13% fee on the additional amount recovered in excess of 500 million. So kind of summarize that, there's an amount that you'll get before entry of judgment. If they settle, if there's a settlement, then that'd be 15%. If it's over 500 million, then there'd be additional 10%. If it's after entry of judgment, then it's 18%. And if it's over 500 million, there'd be an additional 13% fee.
Mr. Esplin, how many drug companies are being brought into this? I mean, is it one, five, 10?
If you look at the complaint that was filed against... I think it was filed on behalf of Pinellas County. Let me pull it up here a sec. You'll see, you'll get a flavor for what defendants are being sued. It's prescription manufacturers and distributors. So looking at... And these are basically the big-name players in the market. Purdue Pharma, Endo Health Solutions, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Teva Pharmaceuticals. So you're looking at about... Just looking at about 20, 25 different defendants? That's kind of the main ones that are being done.
And in your best judgment as the attorney for this board, is there any downside for us to join in?
I think this is a purely political question. It really is. From a legal standpoint, can we do it? Legal, yes. It's not going to cost us any money. It is a classic contingent fee basis. But in terms of whether to accept it or not, that's a purely political question for this board to decide whether you have the... Whether that's something you feel that it's proper for the people or not, but that's completely up to you. It really is.
Yeah, I look at it, it's going to happen whether we're involved in it or not. And, you know, whether that's going to hurt the end user, you know, we just don't know. And that's the part that's concerning to me, as I believe it is to a lot of people.
Supervisor Johnson, did you have a comment you'd like to make?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Esplin, did you look into, can there be a... Where the law company gets the original settlement before and settlement money after? Did you check with the firm on that?
Yes, I talked with them about it. That's... What I explained is what they explained to me. It was Ron Keelgard that answered my questions.
So they'll only get one or the other? They won't get both?
Yeah, it... Well, actually, they could... There is a possibility they could get some after, if they do an entry of judgment. If there's a decision made before entry of judgment, but then if there's an appeal, then there could be, yes, after the entry of judgment. So there is still some possibility that they could get after, I believe.
Okay.
I'll double-check. It was a little bit confusing when I talked with them about that, but I believe there are some limited circumstances where that's possible.
Okay. My other question would be, if we go forward with this, I'm a little concerned that we have a contract in front of us today. Isn't there something that should go out to a bid?
Well, I worked with procurement on this issue, and we could send it out to bid if that's the Board's pleasure. Alternatively, the Maricopa County sent this out to bid, and through the procurement rules, we can, quote, "piggyback on that". They went through the solicitation process, and they picked this law firm. And they recently amended their contract to allow outside vendors, to allow someone else to join in on that if they wish. So we can go this route. We can go with the Keller-Rorback firm, if that's the pleasure of the Board, because Maricopa County already went through the solicitation process.
My only problem with that was, we had somebody give us the proposal before, and then now we're going with somebody else. But if the Board will bear with me, I do have a statement. Would that be okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I tried to put together a concise, short statement, which was hard to do, but I did find an article that covered an awful lot of it. And the following article was printed in the Florida's The Ledger this past week. It was written by Betsy McLaughlin, who is a senior fellow at the London Center for Policy Research and the former Lieutenant Governor of New York, and an economic advisor to President Trump in his campaign for president. And I quote, "Money-grabbing politicians looking to cover the whopping cost of the opioid crisis are filing more than 1,000 lawsuits against the prescription painkiller industry. That's like suing the fast-food industry to pay all the society cost of obesity. It's a shakedown." New York Governor Andrew Cuomo recently jumped on the litigation bandwagon. Cuomo bashed unscrupulous drug companies for pumping human misery into our communities. Wrong, Governor. These painkillers are made to alleviate misery before the current generation of medical opioids. Patients with pain were severely undertreated in the 1990s. Medical groups pleaded for wider use of opioids to curb suffering. Putting the entire overdose crisis on drug companies is scapegoating. It ignores scientific evidence that the biggest cause of opioid deaths is illegal drugs like fentanyl and heroin trafficked to young people. Prescription for high doses of opioids needed for chronic pain are down 41% since 2010. Yet overdose deaths are higher than ever. Medical users are not the ones overdosing. Harvard and Johns Hopkins research find a minuscule 6/10 of 1% of patients prescribe opioids after surgery misuse them. Of the overdose victims who land in the emergency room, 89% are not pain patients. According to the Journal of the American Medical Association, internal medicine, they're younger than typical pain patients, and they're overdosing on stolen pills and street opiates. Blame pushers, not doctors and drug companies. The problem is that these pushers aren't getting punished. A Hartford, Connecticut man convicted of trafficking fentanyl and heroin that caused overdose deaths in four Connecticut towns was sentenced in May to probation only. Pushers are being treated as nonviolent criminals. A mistake. A mistake. New York City Mayor Bill de Blasio yawns while drugs are being sold in public parks. De Blasio is one of the politicians trying to put the squeeze on drug companies with deep pockets. Polls are looking to collect billions of dollars to pay the staggering cost of opioid addiction, including Medicaid policing collects on to reverse overdoses and foster care for addicted kids. The politicians, the lawsuits are about publicity for themselves and filling the public trough for their accomplices, trial lawyers. It's a personal game. Politicians are selecting private law firms to handle these lawsuits. If these lawyers win, they will become widely rich, taking more than 25% to 33% of every payout. Several lead lawyers are veterans of the 1990 anti-tobacco litigation. The big difference is that opioid medications are not coffin nails. Nine million Americans with chronic pain need these drugs to get through their days. The current lawsuits accuse manufacturers of misleading the public about the addictive nature of opioids. That's a flimsy allegation, and the Food and Drug Administration scrutinizes manufacturers' websites, marketing brochures, and television ads for any false or misleading claims. Purdue Pharma, the manufacturer of OxyContin, has had run-ins with regulators, but most of the other companies being sued comply with FDA rules. Who are politicians to second-guess medical experts at the FDA and accuse these companies of misleading statements? A federal judge in Chicago has already dismissed misinformation claims against all defendants except Purdue. But another allegation could stick. Neither drug companies nor the federal drug enforcement agencies lifted a finger when huge orders of opioids were shipped to rural towns and mom-and-pop pharmacies where it's implausible that they were being medically consumed. The drugs are being diverted to the black market. Lawsuits won't solve that problem. Litigations are money-grab. Huge sums change hands without any guarantee that policies will change for the better. Most of the money will land in the hands of the same politicians who have failed to stop the overdose crisis. President Donald Trump recently hinted at a federal lawsuit. Instead, why not pursue tough regulations for tracking the flow of these controlled substances, making sure they're going to legitimate users? Trump already has launched an ad campaign warning young people away from experimenting with opioids and called for tough sentencing for traffickers. Unlike the lawsuit circus, these are sensible measures to prevent opioid deaths. And that article, that's the end of the quote, that article is plain-speaking truth. These opioid lawsuits are a circus and a money grab. It only hurts chronic sufferers and exactly what Mojave County doesn't need to do. We have witnesses' knee-jerk reaction to a made-up problem, attacking people who have legitimate pain and doctors who are doing their best to treat them, when the problem is illegal heroin, fentanyl, and other synthetic drugs that plague our country. These drugs have FDA approval. They have a proven record of helping people. An independent review by the Cochrane Research Team found that only 1% of opioid pain recipients abuse the drugs who do not have a history of drug addiction, and 10% of those who have had a past history. We are simply not going after the pushers or the dealers who are supplying the drugs and helping to destroy our country. No, we call them nonviolent offenders and cheer as celebrities get them pardoned. We all see or hear of them getting probation or rather light sentences. Let's look at Mojave County case of Amanda Doyle, who originally faced 26 felony counts for her part as the ringleader of the opioid ring. Instead of coming down hard on her, the prosecutors cut her a deal that gave her two and a half years and credited her for seven months' time served. That is inherently wrong. This lawsuit accuses manufacturers of misleading doctors and pressuring doctors to prescribe opioids. Really? These doctors have years of schooling, residency, continuing education, and life experiences that helps them make the decisions of how best to treat their patients. They personally see their patients and their reaction to the drugs they prescribe. They are not prescribing recreational drugs. They are treating people to improve their quality of life. I had one constituent contact me. She was 72-years-old and on chronic pain medication. She's tried several options for her condition, but has found opioids the only thing that give her back any quality of life. At 72-years-old, she's being treated like a drug addict and forced to take drug tests every so many months to obtain her medication. This is nothing more than a shakedown on the prescription drug companies. This is about greed and grandstanding. Not once has there ever been a presentation to us stating that the opioid epidemic is costing Mojave County so much money that we have to cut services or raise taxes. All these political subdivisions who are signing onto the lawsuit, in my opinion, are in for the mystical promise of a pot of gold at the end of a rainbow. The money isn't going to stop those affected by the addictions and doesn't stop more people from becoming addicted to illegal drugs. This is just blood money. As a final note, any money received will be tacked onto the price of legitimate pain-relieving drugs that our constituents need to help have a tolerable life. Although those constituents have seen their cost to get their needed pain medications go up by over $300 a month due to new regulations and rules imposed by government, and government and lawsuits don't solve problems. That is certainly not the exception. I would add that when we talked about the cigarette industry, the tobacco industry lawsuit, over 80% of that money was misspent and didn't get to the people who needed the help. So, I will be voting no. Thank you for giving me the time.
You're welcome, Supervisor Johnson.
Chairman Watson.
And thank you for your point of view.
May I say something? I basically agree with probably 99% of what Supervisor Johnson just said. And if it was 10 years ago, I would say, yeah, you know, we have to fight, we have to. But the ball is rolling. It's kind of already happened. And what I was trying to say before is that we are trying at the state level. The only thing we can control, I mean, if we at the county, if I believed that we had any way of affecting, you know, the federal regulations on opioids, I'd say, go for it. But we don't. We really don't. But what we can affect is the state. And as I mentioned earlier, and I truly, truly, because I, again, I hear your passion. I've been contacted by the same constituents and my family members. We all kind of understand that, and we need to work with our state to make sure that that happens. So, I don't see any greedy politicians here who went to any lawyers. The lawyers came and approached us. And we've been, I think, pretty diligent in our discussions. We just didn't say, oh, yeah, you know, free money, let's go. No, I mean, we've been now, this is, I think, the third time we're talking about it. And again, I agree. I agree that it's, but it's going to happen. And it's just one of those things that I think we have to do for our constituents. Should it happen? Personally, I hope it doesn't. I do. I agree. You harm that industry, and it's going to come back and hurt us even more. We see it time and time again. And I've grappled with it. But I do think that we need to, as a county, work with the state to make sure that people who have legitimate needs for pain medication, that they get their medication, whether it be, you know, I don't know if anyone knows. I mean, they've kind of dwindled it down. Not, regular doctors can't prescribe it. Hospitals don't have it. They don't want it. The federal government, the state has made it so difficult. Nobody wants to touch it. It's just so ominous. And now even the pharmacies, the pharmacies who are now the enforcers, they're saying, well, who needs this? This is just a big pain in the neck. And so, they're not carrying the amounts they need. We are an older community here, and there's so many unintended consequences. And I said to the governor, you know, be careful what you wish for. We are a retirement state. And if we're, if it gets out there that Arizona is a tough place to get your pain medication, people aren't going to want to retire here. So, there's so many unintended consequences that we're already seeing. So, I want everyone out there to know that we are working with the state, and we're going to tweak that legislation. Regina Cobb has promised me, the governor has promised me, he's hearing it. I mean, he's not in a vacuum. He came here to Mojave County. He met with the veterans. And that's all the veterans wanted to talk about, was about their pain medication, because that's their quality of life. We all know somebody. So, I'm diligent. I hope Supervisor Johnson joins me, because I hear his passion. But on the flip side, you know, if I thought that us not joining would stop it, I would say, of course, let's not join it. But to make a personal stand, and then maybe down the road, it, from coming in and helping people, I just, I can't personally do it. So, I'm going to be voting yes.
Well, if that's the case, then we need a motion.
Oh, I get my bully pulpit. I just wanted to say that I am absolutely not against prescription opiates. I think there's a need, especially in the remote communities, where it takes a half a day to get into the pharmacy and get your prescription, and you can't just keep coming back all the time in Kingman to get a prescription refill because of potential abuse. But if there is a pot of gold at the end of this litigation and for greedy politicians, then I would like to see, if the board votes to support this and join this litigation, that we specify right up front that whatever settlement that we receive, however long it takes, that it go to fund either a detox center, a drug rehab center, or maybe fund the sheriff's office to help fight illicit drugs in Mojave County. That's it.
As someone who's been now working on drug rehab centers, it is so complicated. I can't, I mean, there's so much involved to specify that. How about we just say to fund public health and addiction programs? I don't think we can narrow it to something as specific as like a drug Tifa.
That'd be acceptable.
Sure. Okay. Just as long as it doesn't go into the general fund to buy new cars with their own.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The intent should be to put it backwards.
So, the public health with addiction programs, or is that the right word, Ryan?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the long-term effects. I mean, I just, I don't want to hamstring future boards or future things. This could take years. And again, we don't know if there's going to be any recovery. I just, you got to stress that, too, is that this is so many unknowns and so many things that are out there that we don't, you don't know if you're going to get any money from it. I don't know if you necessarily want to hamstring future boards with that. If you're going to pass the motion, I would recommend passing it as it stands. And then, if money is recovered later, then you can have that debate and argument later.
And let that board, elected at that time, deal with it.
Right. Is that okay, Supervisor Bishop?
I'm just wondering how much staff time will be involved in this over the years? I mean, we'll have to keep on top of it, I'm sure.
I doubt there'll be much. I mean, I'll certainly babysit it, but I don't think there's going to be much that I'll need to do with it, except communicate with council, update the board periodically, provide information. I know that the, once we retain the law firm, they'll want to communicate with us to get information about us, get evidence and get discovery and things like that. And I'd coordinate with them to do that. So, there's that part of it. There's just that, just the part of handling the lawsuit, of getting discovery and things. But that's a lot of their work that they'll be handling. And it's just going to be contacting the county attorney's office to say, hey, where can I get this? Who can I speak with here? Where can I get this information? That kind of stuff. But I don't think it'll be a significant amount of time.
I just really don't like lawsuits that aren't justified. Not saying that this is not justified, but there's so many, in today's society, there's so many frivolous lawsuits that are being filed all the time. And in fact, it's gotten to be a good way to shut up conservatives, is to just threaten them with a lawsuit, and then everybody is quiet. And, but, so I'm, I don't know. I'm torn on this. I don't know.
Again, if this was something that, you know, we were starting from scratch, Mojave County wants, of course, I would say, no way, Jose. But, you know, it's going to happen, and the decisions are going to be made. And we're either in or we're out.
I just don't want Mojave County's middle name to become Sioux.
Yeah, I don't think so. And again, that's up to future boards. And I don't think we've, have we had any, have we had any lawsuits since 2012 that we've joined in?
Transnational?
No, I don't know. I mean, we've had some just lawsuits that, mostly, mostly, we're in a position where we're defending a lawsuit. That's usually where we're at. Most, and not just Mojave County, that's most government entities. Most government entities are in the position of defendant. You just see that all the time. That's just the very nature of municipalities and stuff. So, it's incredibly rare for governments to be on the plaintiff's side, to be the ones that are actually filing, initiating the lawsuit. That's, and that's just not Mojave County. That is all municipalities in general. I mean, it's just a pretty rare thing.
All right. And this is not costing the county anything, not upfront or down the road. It's just money to come, should there be money to recoup.
That's correct. That's my understanding of it.
So, with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 39 as written.
Okay, we have a motion for item number 39 as written. For the sake of discussion, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Certainly, Supervisor Johnson.
I'll probably take up more of my time on this one, but what we're talking about is, the part that really gets me is, if money comes back, it's coming to the governments. The people that are hurt, that they're talking about, are getting nothing out of this, nor their families. And that's the part that gets me. We're just going to sue somebody, and if money comes back, we'll spend it, you know, however we want to do it. The people who have lost lives, family members, families torn up, they get nothing out of it. I guess that's the biggest problem I have. I'll save my, any other comments, just till I vote, sir.
I share that same concern. I just found out Saturday, I guess it was Friday night, an employee that I worked with years ago, son, had expired and overdosed on fentanyl. It was just a tragic thing to learn that, and I knew how close he was to his son. And there's got to be some type of relationship of which we can get some balance on this horror show. But I appreciate your comments, Supervisor Johnson.
Can I ask Supervisor Johnson something? If we postpone this or continue this and word it, is there any wording that would make you more willing to vote yes on it?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, you know, I'll always look at anything, but to me, it reminds, what I would compare it to would be us saying, we're going to do the lawsuit on the downwinders, and the money will come to the county, and we'll do whatever we want to do with it instead of that money going to the downwinders as it is now. I just don't like the idea that none of us personally, well, I can't say none of us personally, but the people who were damaged by the fentanyl, the heroin, and all that will be long gone. And we're not helping those people out at all. We're just taking more money. But I'm always willing to listen to anything.
Well, maybe we could take the lead and be the county that at least makes that statement. So, I mean, it's not, this is not something we have to join now. I mean, you're talking, this is so, it's not urgent. There's no urgency in this.
It's not urgent. I wouldn't put this off for another four or five months, though. At some point, we got to fish or cut bait.
All right. Well, so, let's continue it until someone from the board finds maybe some wording that they feel comfortable with to bring it back? Does that sound like a motion?
Well, you'll have to pull your original motion.
Okay, yeah. And then, I'll pull the original motion.
And I'll pull the second.
Okay.
And just for clarification, and the clerk of the board can also assist me with this. If we take no action, then later on, another supervisor could bring forth a different proposal, change the language, and things like that. Alternatively, if we continued it, we would keep the same language.
Okay. Then, we'll take no action.
Would you agree with me, clerk? Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
That's okay with me. And thank you, Supervisor Johnson, because I agree with you. I, you know, it's just one of those things that.
It's a tough field.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Motion to adjourn? Oh, we have to 40.
We have, item 39 is no action, and item number 40 has been discussed. Mr. Espin, do you want to expound anything on that?
It's up to the board whether you wish to take any action on this. You don't have to. You don't need to take any action. But if the board wishes to, they can. It's up to the board. I would recommend that you not take any action.
No action. And for item number 40, no action. And with that?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.